10:12, 2025, it's 10 o'clock. Call the B border roll call Smiley. Here?
I'm here.
Where's?
Here.
Board here. Number four approval of warrants and claims. I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five approval of the mental last meeting regular May fifth, 2025.
I like that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six discussion of possible action regarding the next tech services. I'll step out and you guys can talk about computers, call me when it breaks.
Okay, here's the, here's the four different things. Which one is Smiley?
Well, you've got, I've got a copy.
Oh, okay, you got that thing, okay. You guys want copies?
Yeah.
I got one. I've done a bunch of them.
Yeah, that's the IT one.
There's actually three different things going on.
Right, there's IT, there's the shit security, the wifi update. And then my, my office.
IT support.
Yeah, the IT support there. So do you want to look at that, John?
No.
No?
No, I already studied. All I need to study on that.
Okay.
What did, what plan do you want?
I think the middle plan would be. So did I, is that you? I mean, really?
I mean, are, what plan do you need?
Reading through here, Brian, I really don't, and, I mean, I know it's hard to write it out, but I really don't see the differences in the plans short of the cap and hourly rate. There's some different features in there that's not in here.
Yeah, cap and the hourly rate are, are the biggest changes in those two. But the third plan has a lot of audit support in it. And I know Rachel mentioned needing an information security policy and some other audit being done in her department. We're just seeing that coming with a lot of clients needing IT audit support. Insurance companies, different ones are coming in saying, we need your this policy, this. And that includes us helping you generate those policies and being on site for your audit. It's part of that plan, so.
Which would normally be an hourly rate if you were to come in and do that.
Correct, correct. And that's the, really the biggest difference in those plans.
I guess my question would be is what other offices need those audit plans? Is that something that maybe the Treasury's office has a separate project beyond this?
Rachel would probably be the only one. Unless she only needs it for money.
Well, them would be the only ones that I would think, but I, I, I don't think very good sometimes. I'm not trying to make it more difficult. I'm just saying if that's something that's more tailored to her office, then maybe it needs to be.
Christie, we call Rick's position right there. Good job to her.
Uh, no, I haven't. But that's a, yeah, that's a pretty big jump there.
Yeah, well, he does, I mean, going for two, just two, two.
The second to the third one is such a big jump.
I mean, it's harsher, the antivirus programs and all the security stuff. Between each step is the same, correct?
Correct. The two, you're just, you're literally only getting antivirus support and some malware detection level PC's. That's about it. Um, when you go to 2B, that's when you start getting some hours with tech. You can get some other additional services added to the plan. Um, we're able to be here and do some network support and some IT support work for you. C just ramps it up another, another level. Um, where we have more hours available. But that's one question we had for you all in an encumbered situation. So say we get, say you pick the middle plan and in a particular month, the department has a project or they want something done as a part of the plan. We exceed the hours in the plan. So there's additional billable hours that month. How does that work?
Right.
I didn't know, general plan.
And then another question we had was, is there a primary person or someone that's going to be our go-to person for the courthouse?
Smiley.
Yeah. Can't even Google my name.
I want to help.
Um, as far as prevailing or?
Right, there's like an overall plan for the courthouse and so we're working for everybody in the courthouse. But if someone comes in and needs something done and then chews up a fair amount of the hours for everybody, like, is there a central point that we're coming to, to run the? Like, you don't want to get to the end of the month and go, surprise, this department used all the hours because they had this project run this month. I just feel like there needs to be some central person in the courthouse that is packed with.
So why, what if we looked at the, at the, at the plan without the hours included and then, and then those offices that need network done just build that up?
I like that idea because I can figure out who's going to have the most.
Well, there's like a hundred and fifteen, is that right, hours difference between the legit plan and the middle plan? Does that go back to my knowledge there? Did I figure that right? To me, that sounds like a lot, but I don't know. I'm not, I don't know how much.
Well, we're including, we're including hours based on, it's based on the number of PCs and the number of subscriptions in the courthouse. So we're including hours in those plans based on, there's 10 hours a month in C and five hours a month included in B. I mean, so you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a look into that specific aspect.
The labor hours are, they're going to be the same one-time labor hours.
Then if you go with the five, then we're paying a hundred an hour or whatever.
Well, that plan is not capped at eighty-five, right?
Eighty-five.
At the B year.
I think, see, that's why to me that would be the better one. I mean, we're not going to get another $25,000 actually, you know? Of that eighty-five hours, we're not going to, we're not going to ever get to that.
Those are annual subscriptions, right?
Oh, are they? Oh, okay.
That's your, that's for the year.
Oh, well, yeah, that's right.
Hey, Brian, got a question.
Yeah.
Does like resetting passwords and stuff like that, does that count for hours?
Yeah, but it's a 15-minute minimum. So, and, I mean, when you say reset passwords, like forgotten passwords, domain passwords and things like that.
I was saying that's probably going to be the majority of your calls. Accessing their system or, or something like that. I'm not saying that's, it's going to be limited to that, but that's, that's probably going to be a primary.
Right.
I just didn't know if those were billable hours or.
Yeah.
They are and we're doing, we're doing a 15-minute minimum on the tickets. But, but what we're seeing across the courthouse is some departments are doing it really well. Like they have strong passwords and good security and there's other departments with bad passwords. And there's some departments with a common name, common word passwords. And so we're going to enforce strong passwords across the courthouse. We're going to be the bad guys. So there's going to be some people complaining about that at first, but I, I don't want to do the support unless we're going to do it right.
How many hours do you foresee being actually actively involved at the courthouse per month these days?
I think, I think it's going to be a lot upfront and then it's going to tail, tail off. As we get everybody used to doing things the correct way and the secure way. Um, I think it'll, it'll trail off at the end. And we're front loading with some one-time labor charges on all those plans, a little bit of labor anyway. So hopefully, you know, we're covering some of that. But I do think the first several months, I mean, just based on experience, we'll have some hours. And then after that, it should, should trail off.
So how much of that is actually in the plans with the additional setup versus the hourly rate that we get? Does that make sense?
Yeah, the first month if we come in and do the initial setup, we'll do all that in the first couple of weeks that we're here. There'll be a point where we'll say, we're deployed. After that, you'd use your.
So you're going to be saying this is everything we agreed to for now, audit. You call this, it's, it's.
Most concerns. High concerns doing some of the audits.
As far as SA and I, you're up on a SA and I, we've not had any major directives as far as IT security. I do believe that is forthcoming. Um, so I think any assistance that can be provided for SA and I or auditing purposes is greatly beneficial. Um, so again, I think that's coming down the pipe.
How much time do you foresee here, Brian?
As far as the Treasury's concerned, Treasury's office, I don't see an amount of need. Um, we work very closely with our software provider, Tom Martin, and they have IT tech. This is very well-versed and so I really think we can drill down a lot of what we have needs for through that capacity and that contract. Um, if we have any maintenance issues computer-wise or internalizing, we would probably have to have Brian's expertise on that. But, and just the overall umbrella of security as well, so. I don't see a, I don't think.
Is there a second year plan that tags along with this or is this planning, does somebody mention?
Annually, just a year at a time.
Year at a time.
The way we, the way I talked to Shelley about this, we've got to get started to get us, get you along for June 30. And then we'll run June 30 or July 1 to the next June 30 with your subscription. The, the third part of, the third plan, one of the things that we're not doing in the other plans is what they call log aggregation. But we're aggregating all the logs on your servers of who's logging in, when they're logging in, what they're logging in with, failed login attempts. You know, there's a lot of extra stuff in the third plan that's not in A and B. And that's just whether it's required or you're needing it.
As far as my office is concerned, again, no, I don't think that we would need it. We have that audit file within our software for the Treasury's office. So I think that will suffice auditing purposes on that regard.
Is the middle the road for you? Yeah, and then one thing I had, and I talked to Brian beforehand, is if we add users, that changes our subscription. Do we have a breakdown per, per script or subscription per computer? So if I add three deputies, it shouldn't be everybody else paying for it. It needs to be billed to me. How do we bill it to the independent departments for the number of computers that they have? Yes, it should.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So what I'm going to do on task one of this was all the licensing, the things needed for the courthouse. And we went around and did counts of all the PCs, all the users, everybody that needs Office 365 subscriptions. Who just needed email or needed both. And she'll have a breakdown of that. And so if somebody comes up and says, I need to add three more, you'll have the per license cost. And we'll just, it'll come in the next month's bill, so she'll know how to allocate.
Ooh, so, yeah, that would work.
If that works for you, that's definitely what we do.
Well, moving forward on those, will they get prorated so they stay on fiscal year cycle?
That's what we're going to try to do. Um, Microsoft's not very nice to work with on that. But I'm hoping that the ones that you have now are already that way. So we're shooting for a renewal, July 1 to June 30 is what we're going to try to put you on the cycle. Um, I don't know what they're on now. We're going to find out when we get into it. I don't know if you guys know.
Current ends June 30.
Right, but your Microsoft licensing, did this get added as people needed it? Like, is it running from February to February and May to May and?
Just depending on who came on board.
I'm afraid that's what it is.
Ours was prorated out, so whenever, you know, we did.
I think you're the only two departments that were that way.
Yeah, but it was a preparation.
So we're going to try to do that with everyone else so we can get the whole courthouse on.
On the same schedule.
On the same schedule.
That would be nice. Yes.
I kind of feel like, seems like to me the majority of this are seeming to kind of lean towards that task 2B. Is that kind of where?
I think, I think.
Is that where, is that where you're aligned with that?
We have enough for once in a while, but we might have to pay.
Right, so, Brian, the only other question on that. So if we, if we do it over yearly agreement and that's five hours a month with that one for, so 60 hours a year. Is that, can that just be rolled into one lump sum?
We don't aggregate hours. Uh, it's, it's, it's five a month. We should run it out that way for.
We don't, you don't use five a month and we don't get to keep that five?
Right, they don't roll, your hours don't roll, it's not block hours.
I was just saying, if, if month one and two, you know, you're using 20 hours, you know?
Yeah.
For final implementation or stuff that you have.
It's just five a month. Um, and I think, I mean, with 39, where are we total, total users?
Twenty-five, I think, so it's in this page.
Got 36 subscriptions on.
Thirty-nine, no B4 licenses.
And we're talking about adding some users possibly too. So, you know, at that number of users, I don't, I'd be really surprised if you don't use your five hours a month. I, I just think you will.
If we do, can we up our package during the fiscal year?
You can always up your package.
Bet you like that.
Well, yeah. No, I would rather, I would rather us bid it accurate and you be accurate on what you use. I don't want you to have a big overage or under. I mean, I want to get it as close as we can.
Then you're kind of the first one that's going to take over the bulk of it. It's just not know what for sure we all are going to need from each department.
Right.
And it's just scary jumping, I mean, that's no comment.
Like, what, what we've had though is just two departments under support. The rest of the courthouse was thought to be supported and wasn't and got abandoned. And then we've got some projects coming up, like the sheriff wants VPNs to, how many trucks?
Uh, seven right now, but we may go to 10.
Seven to 10 vehicles. There's a fair amount of work just in that.
Right.
So, um, and everybody has their want list. If you, as you go around and count computers and we've talked to people, everybody has their to-do list. I don't think you're going to ever not spend your five hours, just based on what I've heard walking around.
Will there be a way when an office calls in or deputy whoever calls in documenting which office uses those hours?
Yes, so when tickets are, are put out, that's a question I had a little bit ago, a little bit about who's our kind of single point of contact. I don't know if it's for each department or just one person. But when tickets are put out, they're documented, who we, who deployed the ticket, what we did, what department we were in, what the problem was and what the solution was. And then each month you get a bill if you were over your hours or even if you were under your hours, you get a statement that shows all your tickets and what we did that month.
So, and I could see with more, probably more computers and VPNs having more issues. It wouldn't be fair for other offices to be, be around a bill and everybody paying for it.
Ultimately, it still comes out of county budget, either what they, I mean, whether it's billed to me or not, but.
Do you have any more questions?
But it might, it sounds like it'd be a little more cautious about counting times you call.
Right.
You know, for.
But it's a way of tracking who's using it more.
Right, yeah, it is.
I like the motion that we accept 2B and Shelley's Brian's contact on this thing.
Hey, one, one other thing on that. On the bottom, it says that payment for all that licenses is July 1.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's going to be an issue if you're going to pull it out next fiscal year.
Because we won't be able to encumber it until 7/1, 7/1 to be able to pay until the 14th of July. So.
Task one in that project needs to start. Like with the licensing, we're trying to pull all that together, that needs to start now. The subscription can start whenever we're finished with task one.
Okay.
But the, the annual subscription, like we talked, we were going to prorate it from now till June 30 and then do a, a year subscription from July 1 to the following June 30.
So task one would be the licensing of the $11,000. And if we went to the second plan, that'd be the additional.
We could probably, we could probably pay that out in the fiscal year since it's a licensing.
And I was sure that none of this has to be bid.
Well, did you see the two emails we got?
No, I visited Jen, I wanted, I visited with you and.
Okay, so the one I got said that absolutely, it's, it's professional services and it did not need to be bid. Two weeks later, Jen sends to the exact same state auditor and he says that, oh yeah, I think that falls under Title 61. Meaning that it would need to be bid. So, but if it's licensed, the service part of it, I don't think we have.
You're doing two separate deals, one of being in versus the other.
The other part.
Well, if you take this out of the subscription, then we follow that personally.
Right. So I think we're okay.
So does it have to be separately built as a licensed portion build and then the?
Well, we're still, I mean, we can go with B, so that's another reason why, well, if you go with B, we'd be okay. And we may end up wishing we would have received this.
We can, we can, it looks like we can raise it up to 94.
We've got a 90 days in, six months in.
Yeah.
So we're still good with Shane's motion?
Nobody's second to it yet.
I will, if that's what I'm asking.
All in favor?
You're okay with just charging for the licensing and labor cost on task one for now? And then after the fiscal year, then is that what we agreed on, Shelley, is what you're thinking?
What about for you?
We were, well, we were going to prorate whichever one you did for the six weeks that we have.
Right.
Now, June 30 and then do a full license from July 1 to June 30. I incur, like if you guys tell me go, we've got a fair amount of work to do between now and June 30. And I incur my software costs for the support, the help desk and the.
Which doesn't, I mean, your licensing would be a big.
But the, the Microsoft licensing is the biggest chunk. But I do have licensing for your antivirus malware help desk, your system. And that will do, would like to prorate that part out for us to do a six-week piece. And then there would be a, a full year when we started July 1.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, I'll send it.
Okay, so that's that one, but we've got.
That's our full, full.
Yeah, this is the wifi.
I got to still board that.
That's the, yeah.
So as you guys know, the, the rack that was in the basement that Pioneer supported and hasn't supported for a while, all the equipment in that rack, we've agreed to go ahead and update the rack and that's already taken care of. But your wifi, uh, yeah, around the courthouse is that old equipment. And it's, it's the radios, the wifi radios are weak. They're not, like, we tried to do speed tests in here and we've gone to different departments and it's, it's very, very slow.
Do our phones provide wifi?
No, uh, your Pioneer is your phone support people. They, they're handling your voice over IP phone system. And they had you on a, um, help me Shelley, 100 megabit. Um, internet, five-year contract. Um, and I went back to Pioneer based on information I had from other clients and said that's really high. And so they came back and up to you to 500.
No, 250.
We went to 250 meg and kept the price, actually it went down just a little bit.
Yeah, it went down like 20 bucks a month.
So, um, that'll help because we were trying to do the entire courthouse with 100 meg of internet, there's no way.
And then we're also, didn't you say we might have to have boosters or something?
But the wifi, the wifi agreement that Shelley has is the, the ruckus APs, the access points that your phones talk to, that are scattered around the courthouse are all, uh, nine years old and they don't, they're not supported. And they don't, the radios end up weak, they don't have good coverage in the building. And we need to replace the APs.
So was there, was there additional ones added in there, Brian, on that?
We did, um, there was, there's no coverage up around the court waiting area and in the courtroom. And they want coverage there. There was also no coverage down in the basement area, outside tanios and mainly it was.
So what is, what, I mean, is the covered upstairs, is it for lawyers coming in and stuff?
I believe that was their.
Because Shelley's charging people for.
Right.
Wifi, I mean.
And those, um, those lawyers used to pay a monthly fee, well, actually they'd pay a quarterly. And now they quit paying, they don't pay when they come anymore. I don't know if they're using their own hotspots or what they're doing. But our, our reporter is the one that's got to have wifi. And she's having trouble. She has to come and get our wifi.
All added ones were needed or if they were just providing it if it didn't need the support of us?
Yeah, and I'm giving it to her because I feel like.
We found nine APs. Now, that doesn't mean there's not one. But we, we found nine and I'm recommending 14 based on everybody's requests. Because we had a bunch of dead places where there was no wifi at all.
So what actually do we need to take on the wifi?
That was a separate.
Yeah, it's a separate deal. And the total cost is?
35, 72, 10 in equipment and 2,400 labor. And that was assuming Mr. Foster helps us run some cable in wherever we need it.
What was the cost on 2B?
Annually 25, 740 and a one-time 2,200 labor to equipment.
You kind of include the licensing, which is separate from the total.
And, and the wifi is 35, 72 plus what?
2,400.
Well, I think we have to have wifi, so I'm going to make that motion as well.
I'm going to second it because I think we need it too.
Do you know what it is?
Wifi, that's all I know.
Any questions about any of that before we vote, maybe?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
And what's the third item?
The county shed security. What's the third one that we said?
That's for a camera system that my department, and I'll make that motion.
You can make that one, okay.
And that was what, around five, 5,000?
Mm-hmm, labor split and less equipment, but 2,000 labor, 37, 98.
And that one will come out of my budget.
Right, okay.
The other two will come out of Jen, correct?
Right.
Second question.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Did that take care of all the weeks?
And then, I will, I've got mine, so, and it'll come out of my budget. And the Treasury's record is going to pay for hers. I've got to talk to Annette and see if she's going to pay for hers or if I can. I hope she will.
I've got, I've got cameras in mine already, so.
So I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to do that, so, but we got new motion on it.
I think you installed these.
Might have been about a year.
And it's good?
We may not have installed it.
You didn't.
Like it?
No. That guy, he's a, a clown. Clown, um. He's out there north, out there besides JR. He does some security camera systems or something.
Yeah, thank you. Just do that and that way.
Yeah, Brian.
Yeah, yours is your busy strike you're talking about, yeah.
And I'll get that covered too.
Do you have a sheriff's meeting for me?
I think so. If not, I'll, I'll, for sure. Thank you.
You're one of our five hours already. Okay, we all get on that next tech stuff?
Yeah.
Number seven, discussion possible action regarding one of the secret projects. John?
Nothing.
Still got a little room?
BB hole window?
Yeah.
Or unknown.
I've been talking to the city about that stuff and I, I've just never heard that from him. He's not really quick on.
Response to.
Communication. Number eight, discussion possible action regarding how the secret project.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything yet. Yeah, I haven't heard anything yet, I mean, the contractors have been like, put a white brandy, quit, get right after we're gonna start to do something, so, it's like a good little break in the weather, so maybe they'll, uh, get started.
Number nine, approve and disprove blanket reports for the following election board.
Don't like that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number ten, discussion possible action regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-six contract renewal for the Oklahoma Office of Juvenile Affairs for detention and transportation, eleven.
Eleven, okay, anyway, it's a, it's a contract, it's, it's pretty, I mean, we do them every year with them, um, so I don't think there's anything different. They did send a full contract this time, and they haven't done that in years, but, um, so I'm sure some wording has changed, I thought after we've, I'll, I'll make sure that he sees it and, um, is good with it, or we can wait, we can table it, and I can let, um, Randy look at it.
I said do that, take no action.
Okay, let's just do no action, and then, 'cause I was thinking, I thought he was, still here.
Number eleven, discussion possible action regarding the resolution for a State of Oklahoma nine-one-one management authority grant application for an eighty-twenty reimbursement grant to purchase a dispatcher desk and two chairs.
And we're gonna just have you guys all create this on it.
I'll make a motion to approve that. My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number twelve, discussion possible action regarding CDL contract between Woods County and William Huffman. That's just a agreement we made, like the police officers, if they leave before it's paid off.
Are they?
CDL, like you deal with.
You have them give a CDL, is that what you're doing, clearly?
Yeah, yeah.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number thirteen, discussion possible action regarding use of Northwest corner of the courthouse on, on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five for scouting assignments. Very good, Tom, you can do a cup scout.
Three thirty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
My second. Yeah, whatever I need to do.
Aye. Number fourteen, discussion possible action regarding the twenty twenty-five employee handbook, I'll make that motion, we approve the handbook. If there's changes, we can always go back in and modify it.
My second.
All in favor? Number fifteen, new business.
Well, I did want you to know, I did receive this morning, um, from, um, Obers, an official, um, here it is.
Good.
It's, yeah, officially notifying us that David Hamel has retired, and the retirement date is July one of twenty-five. So I just wanted to let you know, I got, received that.
Good. I had a lady come in, basically, they're putting together another package deal for solar panels, isn't it?
They're all signed.
For another solar project out west in Tampa, she asked if we write a letter of approval, and I assume it's like this.
Who's the lady with it?
That company right there.
Resound Networks and Bead Funding?
They're out of, she was out of Mexico, but it's similar to the ones that we met with earlier, the one that's going in northern.
Instead of wind ban, one of them?
Yeah, yeah, and the good news is, it adds like, don't hold me to this number, but I think it was three point two five million to our average area.
That's good.
Over ninety years, no, thirty years, over thirty years.
Yeah, that's good.
So that'd be good doing.
How many acres did she, did she say, what, kind of acres are we looking at, Occupy and Poorland?
Yes.
Not that, I mean, I was curious.
Do you remember? It, it was a lot, a lot more than I.
Can imagine.
Yeah.
She wanted to say we don't object, is that what she needed from us?
Yeah, basically, they wanted to let her support, saying that the county was okay with them coming in, and we've okayed the other ones to come in, so, and if it generates revenue for Woods County, I'm all for it.
Who's out there in that same area?
That's what I understand.
Do you need to sign it?
He signed it.
Yeah.
I do need to make a copy of that, so I'll have that, I'm gonna, I think it's good that, just that I'll have it in my notes.
Anything else, new business? To Shelley?
No.
Number sixteen, approve, disprove blanket purchase orders.
I like that motion.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seventeen, motion to adjourn, recess, or reconvene, I make the motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?